Good morning, everyone. It is 8:30. I will call this morning's meeting of the Clay County Board of Commissioners to order. Our first item on the agenda this morning is an approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Okay.
We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. Okay, this morning, our first employee we'd like to recognize this morning is Wayne Lighthizer. Wayne, you want to come up?
Morning.
Wayne, this plaque is given to you today in grateful recognition of your 15 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you so much for all that you do. Certainly appreciate it. And Kirk is not here today, but I think our administrator has a few words.
Thanks, Wayne. Kirk went left off the hook. He said that your humor and your collaboration, we need to make sure that we got that out there. But he did want to thank you for your 15 years. Wayne came to us from Becker County with, he had eight years of experience there. And so he comes to us with a wealth of knowledge, basically a commitment to making sure that we have a positive and effective department out there. And so we thank you for your work.
And this morning, Matthew Sabestal? I don't think Matt... Okay, all right. Well, this morning, we're recognizing Matthew for his 20 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. We certainly support and appreciate all the work that he does. Do you want to say something, Brian?
Matt couldn't be here today. He typically works 2:30 in the afternoon until 11 o'clock. So, but no, Matt's been here a long time. He does a real good job as the custodian on the second and first floors of the courthouse here. Does a real good job, and he's a definite asset to the county.
Our next employee this morning is Catherine Andring. Catherine, this plaque is given to you today in grateful recognition of the 20 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you so much for all that you do. Jamie, do you want to say something?
Kathy works in the financial service department in the family service team. She processes application interviews clients for cash, SNAP, healthcare emergency, and childcare assistance. And her dedication and dependability to Clay County and the citizens of Clay County are very much appreciated. So, thank you for your positive attitude and reliability that you've demonstrated to make you a valuable part of not only the family team, but the whole unit.
Good morning, Denise. Denise, this plaque is given to you today in grateful recognition of the 30 years of service to Clay County and its citizens. Thank you so much for all that you do.
So Denise actually has been with Clay County longer than 30 years because I just learned in the elevator that she actually was on temporary appointment during migrant season for several years. So she actually started in the 80s. She's done accounting for social services for many years, and then she joined my unit in January of 1999 as a child support aide. And she specializes in an income withholding caseload. And let me tell you, this gal can do the accounting on our very complicated system like nobody's business. So, we're really lucky to have her, and if I have questions, I go to her a lot.
Our next item on this morning's agenda is the citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens in the audience wishing to speak on anything that is not on the agenda? Party in the hallway, but no one wants to talk to us, I guess.
Andy's leaving.
Steve, have you had any individuals reach out?
Nothing, Madam Chair.
All right. Just a reminder to our citizens that this is a time during our agenda that you can address the commission if you have any issues that you'd like to address. There is an option to do that virtually or in person, or you may also submit a form on our website. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the payment of bills and vouchers. Move approval. We have a motion to approve the bills as presented by Commissioner Kaylee.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Are there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. In the packet, we do have the minutes presented from the March 15th and 22nd, Board of Commissioners meetings.
Move approval of both.
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the minutes as presented for both, the second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. Thank you. Item two on our agenda this morning is a presentation on our Moorhead Community Center and Regional Library half-cent sales tax proposal. With us this morning is Mayor Shelley Carlson and the City Manager Dan Molly. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for welcoming me here. As Commissioner Mujo said, my name is Shelley Carlson, Mayor of Moorhead, and I am here to give information about an exciting possibility, truly a legacy project here in Moorhead if approved by voters in November. So, I'm going to click on the PowerPoint. There we go. All right, so, to just give you some information, on November 8th of this year, 2022, Moorhead voters are going to have the opportunity... Oh, I should say, Dan, do you want to say anything?
No. Good morning. Thank you. I was actually really looking forward to being here.
Yes. Dan is my right-hand man. You tried to sit on the left hand, and I said, no, you have to be on the right hand because he is an amazing city manager. But yes, so thank you for having me here today. So, on November 8th of this year, 2022, Moorhead voters are going to have the opportunity to approve a half-cent local option sales tax to fund a new community center and regional library in downtown Moorhead. And the city of Moorhead has really envisioned this project for years, but things didn't really start happening until last spring. Moorhead residents have continually asked for a space to connect with one another for a variety of year-round activities, in addition to talking about the fact that our library is about 60 years old and truly falling apart. It is one of our red-rated buildings in Moorhead. So you can see from these pictures, there are a lot of options of what could go into a community center and what a library could look like. Some of these ideas have already been discussed, but we are looking for community input, and I'll talk to you more about that as we progress through this presentation. So going through the timeline, what we had to do to get to this point. So last May, as you might be aware, in Minnesota, we have to ask permission from our legislature first in order to go to the citizens to put a sales tax in place. So last May, we went to the legislature and got that approval. And then in the fall, I put together a citizen-led task force to really come together to look at where potential community center library could be, utilizing the needs assessment that the library has already done, and really gathering input from them about what they might envision for this kind of legacy project in Moorhead. And this task force has been working tirelessly since probably October, September, October, meeting monthly, sometimes bimonthly, and there are now subcommittees that individuals are leading, and it's truly a citizen-led task force. In January, the task force took their thoughts and ideas to the Moorhead City Council and presented them in order to go to the next step. And in the end of January, the council unanimously approved to put this question on the November ballot to ask for a half-cent sales tax to be able to fund the community center and library. So now it is at the point in our timeline where we will be seeking a lot of citizen involvement through listening sessions and kind of pop-up sessions where people can let us know what they would like to see, also be able to provide information. So it's a two-way where we give some information, but really mostly that they're giving us information and ideas and thoughts. Once all that has been taken into consideration, then we're going to develop some plans, some pictures, some optics for that, so that people are able to actually see what their vision could look like. And then in November, it's going to be on the ballot, and we are hoping that this is Moorhead's opportunity to vote yes and approve the local option sales tax. So the tax analysis, we did a tax analysis. This was through India S.U. And, or we contracted actually with the University of Minnesota, I'm sorry, University of Minnesota Extension Center for Community Vitality to conduct a local sales tax impact analysis. And what we found, there are several key points, and I think that this is something that I'm getting a lot of questions now because we want the community center, but what is that going to cost us besides a half a cent, right? So approximately 30% of the sales tax paid in the city of Moorhead actually comes from out-of-town visitors, which actually was significantly higher than I thought it would be. So Moorhead residents would pay about 70% of this new community center and regional library. What the city's sales tax would generate would be about $1.6 million per year. And what this means is that the average Moorhead resident would pay just a little over $2 a month, about $25 a year in a sales tax to fund the project. So, less than a fancy cup of coffee at a Starbucks drive-thru is what you would be contributing per individual in the city. So prior to the pandemic, which where we looked at the retail base, and Moorhead's retail base remained strong and steady for more than a decade. And really, we expect that to remain steady and stable. To give an idea, Fargo also has a local option sales tax. They have not ever seen any major shifts in retail patterns, and we would not likely see that here in Moorhead either. So current taxes, the current sales tax in Moorhead is 7.375%. This includes a sales tax, a state sales tax of 6.875%, and then the 0.5% or half-cent Clay County sales tax, which you know that that finances the bonds and law enforcement center and the Clay County jail construction. And it's my understanding that that sales tax will come off about seven years early and seven or eight years early, something along those lines. And so with the city's sales tax, the Moorhead's combined sale... Oh, yeah.
I think we might just interject here really quick on the ending of that bond so that public knows 100%.
I think that our honor treasurer has looked into that and has shared some information, internally, but I wouldn't want us to necessarily be completely clear on that one, so.
Okay. Well, then we're going to just say that, fingers crossed that that one comes off early.
Well, I think it's important that the public knows that it has been a healthy option for repayment of those bonds. Certainly, I think that judging what that does after a pandemic is hard, and I think that's probably where we're at, is it's been coming in good, and we're hopeful that our economy locally continues to stay strong on that. Commissioner Campbell.
Yeah, having worked on that bond issue and that whole payoff and the timeframe involved, there were several factors in that, and the bond by itself did not even pay for the... Or the collections, sales tax collections did not pay for the bond all by itself. There were other factors, but because the rates have been coming in so good, there's, you know, it's taken some of the burden off of other areas that we had to take those funds from. But I think it would be, I agree, I think it would be too early for us to say that we can take that off seven years early.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And we have, another thing that we have to keep in mind, because we don't want to fall into the predicament where our jail... We considered too a potential need for expansion when we did this, and, you know, all those involved, we had two additional cells that we were prepared for within this in the event that the population rises. So we just want to make sure that we have all those things.
Well, and that is a good thing, right? Our population is rising here in Clay County, fourth fastest-growing county in the state.
Yeah.
All the rest of them are in the metro, and then we have here in Clay County, which Moorhead itself is nearly 45,000 people out of the 65,000 individuals in Clay County. So, you know, with our population continuing to rise, which I think we all heard at our intergovernmental retreat, that that is just going to keep going up, which that will also help with the sales tax as well. So what the sales, the combined sales tax again would be 7.875. By comparison, Fargo and West Fargo have a sales tax of 6.5, so slightly, it would be slightly less. There is includes a 5% state, a half-cent Cass County, and a 2% city sales tax. But the difference is in Minnesota, as you know, sales tax doesn't apply to clothing, it doesn't apply to purchasing a motor vehicle, there's a lot of different entities that are not taxed or amenities that are not taxed here. And so it's not going to be that significant of a difference, and studies have shown that retail patterns don't change with this minimal of a sales tax. So I think that that's really important to note.
Mayor, if I can, I just want, I think I heard you say that Fargo's and West Fargo's was 6.5. It's 7.5, isn't it?
7.5%. 5% comes from their state, half a percent from Cass County, and then 2% city.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, if I said 6, I didn't mean that. So, right now, the excitement that's happening in Moorhead, I think, is palpable. We have a lot happening here in this great city. Some things are, you know, that's pictured here is our Bluestein Amphitheater, which draws hundreds and thousands of people. We have trails that are connecting our riverfront, and someday there will be a continuous trail from Johnson Park all the way down to Bluestein. You know, that's a pretty cool thing to have, and amenity to have in a city right along the river. We have Miracle Field at Southside Regional Park, and then on the lower right-hand corner is a picture of what a natural playground could possibly look like, and that is going to be constructed in Moorhead this spring. So just a shout-out to the Rotary Groups of Fargo-Moorhead that raised the money to be able to build this. These all started with dreams and ideas and have made our community one that showcases all that we have to offer here in Moorhead and in Minnesota. What the new library, or what the new community center library will do is continue to embrace all of these values that are seen in these pictures, activity, community, and vitality. This project is a legacy project and one that's going to be a catalyst for the development in our downtown. The community is going to help shape the specifics of our vision with some listening sessions that are coming up, and ultimately, the people of Moorhead will be able to speak on Election Day in November. They'll determine the most important step of the journey. So if they share our vision and our optimism for this future, the reality of this dream will be built in 2023, or start being built in 2023. So the city of Moorhead, in conjunction with the Moorhead Library and the mayor's task force, are going to be holding public listening sessions to gather input from the community to suggest and gather information about features and functions of what the new community center and regional library could be. These listening sessions are going to be on April 5th and April 19th, so tonight at the Moorhead Center Library from 4:00 to 7:00, and then in two weeks, again, on the 19th from 4:00 to 7:00 at the Moorhead Center Library. Oh, yeah, mall. I'm already calling at a library. Because that's what optimism looks like. So, if you come to, and I hope everyone comes to these listening sessions, there's going to be a short presentation about every half an hour that's going to give a lot of the same information that I provided. There's going to be different booths that you can get more detailed information about the tax analysis, more information about the needs assessment that was done by the library, information about what the community center could hold. And there will be some free childcare there available, so if adults need somebody to watch their kid for about, you know, half an hour, 45 minutes while they're going through the different booths, that will be available as well.
So nice of you to volunteer to watch everyone's kid, Shelley.
Well, actually, it was Commissioner Campbell. So, I mean, it was very kind of him. He volunteered right away. So, but yeah, that ends the presentation. What was that?
Between 4:00 and 7:00.
Yeah, between 4:00 and 7:00. We need you there at 3:30, though, so. So that is what is happening with our community center library, but I would entertain any questions or comments that you have.
Well, I certainly appreciate, Mayor, and Dan, for showing up today. I know that we'd had some conversations about making sure that you had the opportunity to present this plan to this board. There's so many citizens that observe this, not only within the city of Moorhead, but also countywide. And I think that it's been clear that members of our county have really been supportive historically about important infrastructure, as long as they understand what's going on. And I really appreciate that you're holding these open here, or open opportunities for people to get feedback and weigh in. Public input is certainly one of the most important input sources. So Commissioner Campbell has a comment.
Thank you. Mayor, I know you talked about the needs and maybe what the community would like to see within this facility. I'm not sure to what level of location has been discussed between the city. I know I thought I read something where there was an interest or focus on Center Avenue in Moorhead, whether or not that is ultimate where it's at, but I just, there's another big investment that I'm looking forward to in Moorhead, too, and that's the 11th Street Underpass. And if anybody hasn't seen the model of that, that and along with these other things that Moorhead is considering, the economic development abilities of Moorhead moving forward will be fantastic. And, you know, it just, I saw what was going on there, and I guess I... That Center Avenue, I think, is a, would be an excellent choice for something like that, if I were to weigh in.
Yep, well, and, you know, it's interesting that I brought it up, and I did want to also just briefly mention something, too, that I forgot to mention earlier. One of the requirements to go with some type of a local option sales tax is the fact that it has to have a regional significance. And this community center library would have a regional significance, particularly the fact with, the library also would hold the Lake Agassy Regional Library, which regional is in their title of their agency. This is something and an amenity that would draw from all over, not just throughout Clay County, but it's going to draw from Fargo and North Dakota as well. So it is a regional significant type of amenity. To address your question, the mayor's task force, that is actually one of the biggest issues that they tackled, is where this would be located within the city of Moorhead. And as you kind of reference in the talk about the jail and the new law enforcement center, you know, in order to make this something that keeps the money, or the cost down, is we looked at places within the city where the more, the city of Moorhead already owns land. So we looked at, I think it was, six different areas, and we used a rubric which looked at where is it, you know, what is their, what is access to public transportation? Is there access to green space? Is it around other different businesses or potential businesses so that it could really become a vibrant part of whatever area in the city that this would be placed? And ultimately, what rose to the top, based on this rubric system, was along Center Avenue, so somewhere within that Moorhead Center Mall footprint. And so that would be likely the location. And my vision is really having this community center library and, it's a public hearing, but I'm going to do it. I would love to have that science museum there, too, and just along, you know, two blocks along Center Avenue, or what we're calling Center Stage, that that is a place where so many people would be drawn to. You would park your vehicle once, and you could go and get a coffee or go get a sandwich somewhere, because those types of things will pop up when you have something like this in existence. And you can go get your library book, you can have, take your kids to play in, you know, if it's an indoor play area, and you can go to the science museum. I mean, if it's all right there, and you only have to park once to access all these other amenities, it would just be absolutely exciting.
And the beautiful thing of that, Mayor Carlson, is once the 11th Street Underpass is done, there's less waiting for trains, whether you're going north or south.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
If I could, just to your point, Commissioner Campbell, on economic development, it's such a great question, and it's so true. You know, when we do our budgeting, 16% of the tax base in Moorhead is commercial industrial. And so when residential property owners talk about carrying a greater share of the burden than they should, they absolutely are. They're right. They're not lying about that. So these investments, these public investments and these improvements to kind of lift that commercial industrial presence is phenomenally important, and we have to do it. If we're doing, if we're not doing that, we're not doing our jobs.
We always say here at the county level, what's good for Moorhead is good for Clay County, and what's good in rural Clay County is good for Moorhead, so.
I think it was Senator Paul Wilson that said, "We all do better when we all do better."
All right, Commissioner Ebbinger.
Yeah, I've got a couple dogs in this fight. I'm a member of the Lake Agassy Regional Library Board, former city Moorhead employee for 12 years, and I'm a member of the executive committee for the Grand Fargo-Moorhead EDC. In all these roles, I just see such promise in this. I want to talk about the library just real briefly here. People who think that's where you go to get a book don't have the whole story. We've got, one of the, one of the big problems we've got in our community right now is workforce development, hiring, affordable housing, all these issues. This is the access point for technology for so many people in our community. This is where they can go to apply for a job on the computer. This is where they can look to see what training is available and get training. This is even where a lot of people have access to our criminal justice and our justice systems. And it's not only that there's computers in our library, it's that there are people there, an incredible staff of people, who mentor and assist and are there to respond to the needs of the people in the community. And right now, unfortunately, it's housed in a building that is very much like the old law enforcement center and the old county jail were. It's not worth the money that you've got to put into it just to keep it from flooding, from leaky roofs, bad air conditioning, and poor plumbing. It's a structure that is screaming to be replaced, doing a vital function in our community. As a former employee of Moorhead, I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank the city manager for having the initiative that we, I, quite frankly, as an employee, I was frustrated that I didn't see in years past to take this bull by the horns and do some things to get Moorhead developed and point in a direction where they are part of this region and a viable part of it. This is critical. And I know as a board, we may or may not make a decision to endorse this. As an individual, I am so hopeful for this. We found out when we built the law enforcement center and the correctional facility that the people in this community will pay if you tell them there's a need and that it's being done responsibly and that the need is being addressed through this action. I can say this touches all those bases, and I'm really excited about seeing this develop.
Commissioner Kaylee.
I just want to encourage the public, if you have ever said, "Wouldn't it be great if we had a, I wish we had a," this is your opportunity to have that be heard, to not just speak into the void or to your best friend. This is to be heard, to help shape the vision of the community that you want to live in for yourself, for your kids, and for your grandkids. So if you have a, "I wish we had a, wouldn't it be great if we had a," show up at one of these events and be heard and share that and get excited and talk to your neighbors and talk to your friends. This is a wonderful, exciting moment, and I'm so glad that we have you guys captaining this ship, to have a beautiful community that we want to stay in and thrive in for years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. To that, I just want to add, I really... To that, I just want to add, I really appreciate that. We're also, in addition to the listening sessions, we plan to set up tables, say, at the Dairy Queen, at the Junkyard, I'm signed up for that one, at the, at the Morehead Center Wall.
How am I supposed to be there and babysit?
You know, a few places around town. And then online, there'll be opportunities, there'll be e-notifications and stuff where people can submit their comments, so we do that. And then, and I just want everybody to know that this isn't the last time we're going to be here on this one. We'll probably come back at least once, maybe tw- two times, when there's more definition to the project, and then probably in the fall to share, just so everybody's clear as crystals, so that, you know, whether, not everybody's going to support it, not everybody's not going to support it, or whatever, but it would be great if everybody understood what it is.
Any other comments? Not?
Oh, I thought Commissioner Gross was going to say something. He leaned forward.
I'm all full agreement with this project, so. Good, good luck on it.
Thank you very much. I really, truly believe that the stars have aligned in Morehead, and this is our opportunity to create a legacy project. This is going to be a game changer in Morehead, and I am excited to see what the result is. I really feel that strongly that this will be a yes vote in November. So thank you for the opportunity to present, and I look forward to coming back when we have even more detail.
Thank you so much. I also want you to know that this is not the only project that we, well, we're not working on this with you, but there are a host of other projects that we've worked with the city of Morehead on. Later on, on our agenda, we will be asking the board to approve the cooperative service agreement for the new transfer station that we're jointly going to champion. So thank you so much for the work to get that across the finish line. I know that was a big deal, but thanks for your leadership and look forward to seeing you later.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three on our agenda this morning is a request for the WIC clinic to lease two offices in the Family Service Center. We have our facilities director, Joe Olson, and our public health director, Kathy McKay. Good morning to you both.
Yes, oh. Pandemic's over.
Sorry, we're a little behind.
No, that's okay. We're just, we're here today, usually normally this is a consent item, but we felt that with Kathy's, has some budgeting stuff that she's, she's going to be taking the cost out of her budget. So basically, this is, we had a tenant recently vacate, and it's just two small off, two small offices. One is an office, one you could call a closet, really. Bordered, it, it borders a WIC with a natural corridor of a door that opens, so we're asking, Kathy's got her, her hallways and stuff are filled up with stuff that they need, and we're asking to have her take the space over. I think the budget is $2,200 annually per year, and Kathy has that in her budget.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Board wishes?
With approval.
Motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve, a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Just to note, this is an annual cost of $2,200, but the funding source would come out of public health, correct? Anything else? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the request is granted. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I just, one quick note, it's not on the agenda, but I did get the signed protocols last night, so check the website for those of you interested in the second booster dose or, AKA your fourth dose, because I have the protocols signed, so we are able to administer those.
Okay, thank you. And I also want to thank you for, even though we don't have an agenda item, you're continuing to get information to the public through social media and website, and just really appreciate you continuing to do that. I've seen it in newspapers and on news articles, so thank you. This morning, we do have a bid opening for the main air handler at the Family Service Center, Joe?
Yes, just to start off, it, we only have one bid here, it looks like. This hasn't been a real popular one, I've had to rerun it a few times. But, yeah, this is the unit up on the sixth, well, we call it the penthouse. It's the top level of the Family Service Center, so it's a massive air handler that takes up the whole room, and it's a, it's a, going to be a pretty, pretty big project here. So I guess I'll start out with opening the bid.
And your estimate on this was $215,000?
Yes, $215,000. That's including, we've added like $9,500 to this as an estimate. We don't know if we're going to run into any asbestos underneath this thing when we rip it out and some other random owner coordination stuff, but I'll, I'll have that all next week laid out for you.
Thank you.
But, yeah, $215 total is what we're estimating. Okay, requirement is bid bond and license copy, contractor license, and some insurance, so. Right now, I'm opening up the bid bonda from Dakota Plains Mechanical. Looks like we're good there on that. They got their insurance, so we're good to go there, and license, so we're good. Okay, so Dakota Plains Mechanical's bid is $203,500, so.
And you feel comfortable today approving that, or do you?
If the board, knowing this number and knowing, I feel comfortable going ahead, but I usually, I'd like to take a week, I'll come back next week. And I want to call them and just do a little investigating and see where the total project comes on that. But, yeah, I think we're right on from what, we're not, we're, we're pretty close to what we think it was, so.
So no action?
Yeah, no action today. I'll be back next week with a.
Jury review.
Yeah, with the total project cost, but, yep. Looks like we've come pretty close to that number anyways with this, so.
Well, good news. I know that that is a project that has been identified to be paid for through ARPA funding. I am hopeful that because it came in underestimate, that that includes everything that we're needing, but certainly feel that that warrants use of those funds because of what, how it will transform the air quality in that building.
Yes, yes, it's got, the system has a, it has a thing that is, yeah, will improve their quality for sure on this, so we've had questions about that in that building, so. ARPA, the ARPA itself is, we're looking pretty good on that. I think we're ahead there on, on the budget, so.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks.
Item five on our agenda this morning is our regional director, Cecilia Almedu, through extension and a request to change the current county support staff for extension from a county hired position to a university hired position. Good morning, Cecilia.
Good morning. Good to be in your presence again. Last time we were here, we were talking about all the great work happening in Clay County, and sometime in the fall, we'll be coming back with all the great work happening with the ag educator in our county. Today, however, we thought this would be a great opportunity to discuss the change of the support staff, who is the person that is the gatekeeper and welcome families as they come in with questions or anybody with specific ag questions, she's the person, or he or she is the person that kind of helped navigate the office, and that person left that position back in March, and we thought it would be a good opportunity to discuss what that position could look like. Assistant, right now, the position was supervised by the county administrator, and we found that it was some opportunities to change that a little bit, so we're coming back to see how we can save the county a little bit of money, but also move that position to become university hired position. That individual will only support Clay County work happening in Clay County 100%. When that position becomes available to be posted, it will, we will make sure that that position is posted within Clay County. However, we don't have control over who applies, but majority of the work will be done in Clay County. With this change, it will save the county about $13,871. Currently, the position with the university is going to be hired at $29.36 per hour for 2022, and then with a 2% increase in 2023 and 2024. Yearly, it will be about $61,214. Previously, it was about $75,085. That's what it was costing the county, and with this change, you'll be saving about $13,000 a year, a little over $13,000 a year. And we're with to, that person will be supervised by the regional director. I see the work happening each day and can manage that support staff easily, in my opinion. We have a lot of counties that are switching to this model in within your region. We think this is a good model for counties to adopt, and that's why I'm here today. It will be an addendum to your, currently, the MOA that you do have with the university will just add this, an addendum to it, and that will be the only change.
And it would, just a clarification, it would not extend the MOA, it would just be an addendum to the current?
Yes.
Cecilia, thank you for presenting this proposal to the PIC committee. I know that Commissioner Campbell and I had taken part in that discussion. As someone who is incredibly involved with extension locally and statewide, I know historically, this position has been very important for the function of that office, that the people that have served in that capacity have really been champions of that department. They're the first line of response from citizen concern and questions, and I think it's really important that we continue to stress that we don't want to see that part of this position changed. That's, that's a vital part, is to have such a face to that department responding to local concerns. I can also say that from the state extension, there have been several counties that have gone to this model, and I really think it helps information flow within the positions in the county offices, the regional office, to really help make sure everyone is under the same supervisory structure, but also knowing exactly what organizations' policies are. I think that, that has been a point of confusion maybe in the past. So I'm hopeful that we can continue what the model has looked like, but just tweak to make sure that it's, it's under the university MOA. I, I think that it does serve as an opportunity for us to see a reduction in that MOA, and I, I know that this board has supported an increase in that in the past to change some of the, the contract hours with one position, and, and so I, I think that this board has been flexible to that. Certainly, when we can see a savings, that's, that's helpful as well. Questions?
And to be exact, about 15 counties within our, within the statewide, but about, you know, Polk County, Polk County, Wilkins County, your neighbors in the area that are doing similar things.
Yeah, the PIC committee recommended approval of this.
Is that?
I would, I would, I would move.
Second, we have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the request, a second by Commissioner Kaylee. Reminder that the CEC committee does exist to be a sounding board for concerns, and if any information comes up that you need feedback, they're certainly willing to offer that. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carrie, thank you. Cecilia? Steve, do you mind if we go with Greg on number seven? So when I see snow in the forecast, and I wonder, why is it that we just can't leave the grasp of winter? I look at the agenda and see we have this agreement this morning. Greg, good morning. Before us today, we have a resolution 2022-12 for the Clay County, for Clay County to act as a legal sponsor for the DNR funding of our snowmobile trails that have been managed by the Clay Trails Alliance. Greg, good morning. And in all joking aside, the work that you do to maintain those trails is phenomenal. It was a definitely a tricky winter on many different fronts, but to see the diligent work to continue to keep those in as top working order as possible, thank you for that work.
Yes, it was a testing year, trying year, for sure. I just want to give a quick update on this, too, and then we can go to the resolution, which is, you know, you guys being a sponsor for us, so we continue to groom the trails, sign the trails, try and make them as safe as we can for everyone out there. And in review, we had a semi-successful year grooming the snowmobile trails in Clay County. Why semi-successful? Because it seems like every time we groom, the wind blew, so maybe that was our fault, I don't know, but, and when it blew, it blew. It was incredible this year. We've never seen anything like that. So sometimes we had to go over things two, three, four times. Guys were putting in way many extra hours. Things were taking way longer this year just because there was so many bumps and just huge drifts to fill in, get rid of. So we had 12 different drivers this year that helped out. We did a total of 3,476 miles, so that's equivalent to one machine driving the West Yellowstone and back by itself. 513 hours are what our guys put in, and that's only driving the groomers, that doesn't count the maintenance nights either. And then, we didn't start the year off so well. We had one machine go out early, we had an early snowfall, and he did, had a major breakdown right away, and I had a front differential go, I had to put on a trailer, haul it back, took us two weeks to get that fixed. But other than that, the year went pretty well. A lot of stocks again this year, so no tow trucks involved or tractors, had to pull anybody out, everybody was able to shovel themselves out, which was good. And then updates for next year, we did apply, as you guys know, you approved the RTB grant to be a sponsor for that again. That's a recreational trails program. Essentially, our gas money we pay for the snowmobiles goes into, you know, obviously we're not driving on the roads with them, so that goes into a fund that gets distributed out, and so we can apply for an equipment grant to get $75,000 to help offset the cost of a $275,000 groomer if we were to buy new, so. One other thing we're looking at doing this year is we're going to add some wings to our drags, that smooth it out to make the trails wider. What we saw as, we would make two, three passes on an area, and it would, the wind would actually blow it clean versus if it's just, you know, that way, you know, the drift goes like this, so that way, if it's got flatter, so the trails would stay flatter, so we're going to try and make our, our drags bigger this year.
Okay.
So with that, yes, it was a very, very busy year. I'm ready for the snow to be gone, too.
All right. Any questions from the board?
I would move resolution 2022-12.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the resolution.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Evinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Granted, thank you, Greg. I did sign this, if you need Steve to sign it before you go, or whatever.
I can wait for the break, too.
Okay. Thanks so much for what you do. Okay, now we are back to item number six. Thank you for your patience and approval of the cooperative service agreement with the city of Morehead for operations at our resource recovery facility. Our solid waste manager, Kirk Rosenberger, is out. He certainly has done a lot of work to make this happen, but we have our administrator, Steve Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, member, members of the commission. As I mentioned before you this morning, you have a cooperative service agreement. We're looking at a three-year agreement in, in the operations of our new resource recovery facility. As you're certainly aware, since 2016, we've been working with the city of Morehead in regards to getting this facility ready. We're hoping that by the end of this calendar year, the facility will be, will be completed. Having said that, we wanted to make sure that we had a, an agreement in place for the operations and procedures within that facility. I've worked closely with Mr. Melton, Kirk Rosenberger, over the last number of months. Also, the city of Morehead, we've met with them on multiple occasions, and also Commissioner, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo have also had some discussions in regards to, to this agreement. The agreement for you, as I mentioned, it sets three years, it sets the, the policies and procedures, the guidelines of who's responsible. As we've talked about before, there's really three parts to this facility. There's going to be the transfer station floor, which is going to be operated by the city of Morehead, that will replace the existing building out on Highway 10. There will be an office space that will be shared between the city and the county, and also a household hazardous waste section and a citizen drop-off, which we, which will be operated through, through the county. And so, again, this, this agreement sets up who's responsible for those, those, each of those parts of the building, sets up the liability, insurance, and with that, I would yield for any questions.
Thank you. As mentioned, this, this has been something that we've really worked at committee level to make sure that we're addressing the points that have been brought up. to make sure that we're addressing the points that have been brought up. Certainly as we, our, our starting a new facility, there's a bit of unknown. And so we address that however best we can. And certainly with Brian Milton's expertise, we've come to this point. Kevin, do you have anything else to add on it?
None.
I would also note, Madam Chair, members of the commission, we also work closely with MCIT in developing this plan to ensure that we had all the important, important portions in that included.
Board wishes.
Move approval of the agreement.
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the three-year cooperative service agreement.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner Gross.
One question. Now, we're not going to start operating this thing till the end of, I mean, end of twenty-twenty-three or when, when is this?
Our, our hope is that, that it will be completed by the beginning of, end of this year, beginning of next year.
Oh, okay.
The implementation timeline noted was upon the opening of the facility.
Anyway, twenty-three, okay, very good.
Any further discussion? Questions? This is a big day.
Actually, just to clarify, I think the term of the agreement states that this agreement shall commence on the first day of January twenty-twenty-three and terminate on the thirty-first day of December twenty-twenty-five.
So I said upon implementation because that's what the memo says? Are you wanting to change?
I, I think we, I think in our preparation of the, of the contract, we just targeted that, that time as, as the, as the proposed possible date. We'll leave it to Brian, I guess, as far as.
I think originally we had term of agreement starting January of twenty-twenty-two, but we're obviously past that date. And then we just put it in as the, where we thought we would go into effect. I think we could, we could determine if that's, I think this is what Morehead has already.
Morehead has approved this.
Approved it last.
Has approved that last Monday.
So I, I guess if we can, I think we could approve this now. If something came into effect and we thought we needed to put something in effect that came in earlier, we could amend. But maybe best just to leave it as this for now, I think.
I'm assuming though, Brian, that the language of the term of the agreement was, is, is the language that was used by the city to approve.
Correct.
So we want to, we want to match that.
I think we would, and then if there's some issue, I think what happened was because we knew we were past January one of twenty-two, I think we moved it to twenty-twenty-three. And I don't know if we'll have to look at something and whether all of a sudden, by August of twenty-two, we might.
I think, yeah, I think we, when we looked at, you know, our, through our owners meeting, we talked about the end of October, the possibility has been some delays. And so I guess I would anticipate that whether this is, whether the project is completed earlier or whether the project is later, we would probably have a consent agenda item, both for ourselves and for the city.
Modify the date.
It's adopted as is, I think we just have to, we probably change and put it in effect, say whether it's October one. But I think that's the big question of where that timeline started, so that might be changed. But I think it'd be good to approve as is now when we, if we need to.
You feel comfortable with the action?
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion? At some point in January, with signing of this, there will create the establishment of an advisory board. That is not a board that is advisory only, not a joint powers agreement, but we'll want to make sure that we add that to commission portfolios. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The request is granted, thank you. The next item, if you will, Commissioner Gross has a meeting at ten o'clock. So if he can please give his committee reports before he goes, Commissioner Gross.
Okay, March twenty-second, I attended the FM diversion update. Give a good presentation of how far they're going, what's, what's going on there. There's a few people in attendance, I guess some had questions on it, but I think they took care of them all right. Then twenty, March twenty-eighth, I attended the deal with city council meeting. March twenty-ninth, we had the detox, detox meeting with Klein McCarthy Architects out in Minneapolis. And there we discussed quite a few things like whether we want to go with single rooms or we'll put two people in a room, which would be better. We were looking at, oh, for COVID measures, it'd be better to have single, single one room for everybody. And also that they would have a private room to go to if they want some quiet time. Because there was some discussion on putting in extra rooms just for quiet time where they can go read a book or something like that. Well, they can go back to their own room and if they're single rooms, they can go back to their own rooms and do that. Discuss a little bit on whether we should build a garage onto, onto the building and the Sally Port, I guess, where they're bringing people in, whether we should just enlarge that a little bit and make a garage out of that. But it sounded like it's going to be a pretty big price tag on a garage attached to it. Plan on having another meeting in another week or so. There's a lot of stuff, just got to start it on ideas and how we're going to build a building, so. April first, well, we all attended the governmental retreat. Things were good, good points brought out and how to conduct meetings and how to be a successful leader and what kind of points that person should make and, and their presentations. Yesterday morning, I had MRC meeting, it was on Zoom. Again, we, we had Paul Torkelson, one of the representatives talking, and Nathan Saccharias and Brian Martenson, they all gave good talks on what's, what's going on. Broadband mostly, how much money there's in there. They got a hundred million dollars in the general fund from, for border to border that can be utilized yet. And they're looking at increasing the state match from, for broad funds, for, from the federal funds from fifty percent to seventy-five percent. I guess that's, talked a lot about the score, solid waste management tax, how to fund that thing and how to get more money out of it. So we're trying to get more money. They're taking in seventy million dollars and they're only sending out eighteen million dollars to the people, so, to the counties. I guess that was pretty much my means, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. If possible now, we can take our ten-minute break. We are scheduled to come back at nine-thirty-seven. We're back from our break, thank you for your patience. Item nine on our agenda this morning is the annual department update from our planning and zoning director, Matt Jacobson. Good morning, Matt.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. All right. So thank you for having me this morning. And to give you the, the update from the last year in planning and zoning. And I'll, you know, similar to what I did last year, I'll just kind of give a brief overview of the department and some of the functions of, of the department and then the, the boards that make land use decisions in Clay County. I think it's helpful for the public to kind of get a little education and awareness on that.
Very much so.
So first, I'll start with a mission statement. The mission of the Clay County Planning Office is to promote the public health, safety and general welfare of county citizens. And one thing I'll just say about that is that's very, it's very general language, but it's not arbitrary or anything like that. It's actually in statute that the, the power to, for jurisdictions such as cities and counties to zone comes from police power, which is to regulate things such as land use, specifically to promote the public health, safety and general welfare of residents, whether it be a city or a county, in this case, the county. So literally every land use decision that's made, any, whether it's a, an ordinance or a permit, should be made through the lens of how is this going to impact the public health, safety and general welfare of county citizens? So what our office does, we do planning. So the comprehensive plan, that's kind of the, what's been, been working on this past year and getting close to the, to the end on, on that. There's a light at the end of the tunnel there, so it would be good to have that finalized. And then that provides kind of our, our vision for development and land use in the county. How that's implemented, how that vision is implemented is through the development code. So right now, our development code is from two thousand and twelve. And so after the adoption of a comprehensive plan, but then I think the statute says that a jurisdiction should consider, you don't have to do this, but you should within the next five years, updating your development code to match the, the goals and objectives of your comprehensive plan. We also do permitting, so building permits, land alteration permits in shoreland areas, and then minor subdivisions, so single lot subdivisions, these are administrative decisions. We also staff the, the board of adjustment, occasionally the board of commissioners when you all are making land use decisions, and the planning commission. We do investigations enforcement. We are the floodplain administrator for the county and also the administrator of the shoreline program. So the board of adjustment, just going to give you a brief rundown on that. Basically, the board of adjustment is the body that's appointed by the board of commissioners to make decisions on variances. So these are decisions where a property owner may need to or wish to vary from the standards in the code and due to some practical difficulty that is not created by the, the, the landowner. The planning commission is also established by the board of commissioners. We have an eleven-member commission. And it's got a pretty diverse makeup of different stakeholder groups in the county. They also serve three-year terms as well, and they make decisions on permitting. So conditional use permits and interim use permits, and then also recommendations to, to the board on major subdivisions, rezoning, text amendments, things like that. And then your role is, as the board of commissioners, is, is providing enforcement and administration of the development code and comprehensive plan, which is delegated to the, the various boards and county staff holding public hearings. In some communities, the board of commissioners is also the planning commission. In, in Clay County, the, the planning commission is a separate entity. And then making zoning amendments, whether it be to the zoning map or to the text of the code, and then subdivisions, major subdivisions as well. I'm going to give you a brief kind of overview of our permitting activity in the last year and providing stats back to two thousand and fifteen as well. So the pandemic and the construction shortages of materials, labor, also some cost prohibitive or impediments that have, have occurred with construction just to, due to the labor and material shortages, has not slowed down permitting and construction activity in Clay County at all, which I think is a great thing. We processed one hundred and seventy-five permits last year. Forty-three of those were new homes, and the valuation of that was about twenty-six-point-seven million dollars. So to put that into perspective from last year, we're looking at, I think about seventeen million. So almost ten million more in valuation in, in new construction activity, which is, which is great. And this may be the most, or the, the most permits that have been, been issued in a single year by the planning department.
Matt, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I think this is an important graphic, and I always encourage you to let me understand the historical trends that we're seeing in terms of new permits and buildings. At what, what point are we able to look back and see what dwellings weren't built? So if someone were to, to grab a permit and not go through with it, does that still show up on that? Or do we drop that number off?
We would drop that number off. So all of these are, are, have been built or are under construction.
Well, certainly hopeful that with the rises that we're seeing in terms of materials, that doesn't stifle these numbers too much, but important, solid growth is happening, so it's good to see.
Absolutely. So in addition to permitting activity, we've seen a very dramatic increase in the amount of single lot subdivisions or minor subdivisions in Clay County in the last two years. And I think a lot of this has to do with the low interest rates that have been occurring. And a lot of folks are taking advantage of refinancing. And as part of that, a lot of banks don't want to, they just want to refinance on the house and not ag land. So you're seeing a lot of residences or farm sites, home sites being split off from, from ag land in, in the county, which is driving a lot of, of these minor subdivisions. Be interesting to see if that trend continues into two thousand and twenty-two with just rising interest rates. There's also been some major subdivision activity. I think we did two in the past year. So that's the multiple lot development, and we didn't do any in two thousand and twenty. So use permits, use permits have also risen dramatically in, in the past year. So in two thousand and twenty, the planning commission approved twelve interim or conditional use permits. And in two thousand and twenty-one, that went up to thirty-five. A lot of that has to do with a increased community, or community solar happening in the county. Also, a lot more home-based businesses, so a lot of home occupation businesses. So if you're running a business out of your home, seeing a lot more of that in the county as well. And then also gravel mining continues to be by far and away the largest share of permitted uses in, in Clay County.
Matt, did we see the first solar permits in two thousand and nineteen?
Yes.
So that would be when those started on?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, and so this kind of gives you a breakdown in the past six years of the types of use permits that have been granted in, in the county. Gravel mining, new and expanding, gravel mines have been almost thirty percent of all permitted uses. Community solar gardens have been up there, and then warehouse and storage, storage buildings as well. Commercial storage has been the third most permitted use. This should say, shouldn't say grave pit activity, that's disturbing. Gravel pit activity. And I also got my five and six mixed around here. So it should be, we have sixty-five active gravel pits in, in Clay County, not fifty-six. The average size of these is about twenty acres. Right now, just an estimated, if you're looking at what's open in the county in terms of, if you're looking at a gravel pit, open acreage, about forty-six-hundred acres are, are open right now. And that's actually based off of staff delineating the size of gravel pits based on two thousand and twenty aerial imagery. Permitted acreage, you can see there's a discrepancy there. That largely is because in Clay County, we have pits that were, are grandfathered in. They were established in the, in the seventies and eighties. And so they're, they're not permitted because they proceed our, our permitting process. Gravel tax, just going to give you an idea of, of gravel tax revenue and the amount of material reported for two thousand and twenty-one. Just because this is an important indicator of economic activity as well in Clay County. You can kind of see, so just to give you just a general overview of how that tax is distributed. County gets forty-two and a half percent, townships get forty-two and a half percent, and then fifteen percent goes into a, a reserve fund primarily for, for reclamation. And so in two thousand and twenty-one, it looks like the, the total tons and total cubic yard and. And so in 2021, it looks like the, the total tons and total cubic yard, or cubic yards kind of measured both ways depending on how the company reports it has, has gone down. And to me, that's kind of a head-scratcher because there's been a lot of economic activity related to gravel, and there's been a lot of new permitting of pits. And so the fact that that number has gone down is interesting.
Yeah, if I might just continue that thought. I saw the same thing and was perplexed at the total tonnage in 2017 and where, what we're anticipating for 2021. And it is curious to me, there was probably one of the largest backfills on the Amazon facility on the North Dakota side, and the amount, if you just look at the usage on our roads alone, that our highway department could probably also agree with, it's, it's curious to me. I know that Commissioner Gross has had a lot of conversation with concerns the townships are raising on how we're arriving at that number as well. And I feel like it's, it would be appropriate to look at that a little closer, just to double check that reporting is happening correctly, because I agree there, you know, if you talk about what's the fill needed for the diversion, and, and there are some enormous projects that Clay County aggregate is being used, used for, I just want to make sure that we're getting it correct.
Absolutely. And with the, with that gravel tax, that's administered by the, the Auditor's Office. So we, the Planning and Zoning Department, essentially, we will send out, because we do the permitting, we send out the, it's self, it's a self-reported tax that's, that's reported quarterly. And so the Planning and Zoning Office will send that, that out, the form that the, that the operator would report back on. And then that would go to the, the Auditor's Office, who actually is in charge of administering that, that gravel tax program.
Commissioner Campbell.
Matt, the, the, this, yeah, I find this, I find this really interesting, based on what we see going on and, and these numbers going way down as opposed to, the logic would say that they should be going up. These are, these are public record documents, aren't they?
Yes.
We should, could we ever get Becker County's numbers?
I would, I, I would think so. I would need to check with, I can check with our county auditor to see if, if we can.
You know, because another thing that we often hear about is, is the gravel trucks being loaded in Becker County and coming through Clay County and banging up and damaging our roads. And so I'm, I'm just curious as to if we're down, is Becker County up? You know, I mean, that could be, that could be a reason, I, I guess. I'm, I'm looking for, like Commissioner Motors said, I'm looking to try to understand this better because it makes no sense that our tons would be dropping the way they're dropping.
Yeah, and that's.
There's either a reporting issue where they're, they're getting it somewhere else.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, Commissioner, that's certainly a possibility, especially in the southeast part of the county, if you go right across the county line into Becker County, there's.
That's an awful lot of gravel in that area.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that it's, I appreciate that. I think that would be helpful. It's, it's difficult to correlate that because the growth that they're seeing in the Lakes area as well, you know, we're just kind of looking at what the production is in a certain part of that county, but it would help us understand the whole picture.
Yep. And if, and if it's your wishes, maybe this is something that we can dig into a little more, just looking at individual operators with, with, in collaboration with the Auditor's Office.
I, I, I certainly think we should put in a request to find out comparable numbers, historical numbers for Becker County.
Yes, Commissioner Ebbinger.
Yep, just looking at, at the 15% that goes to restoration of, of the mining, or the gravel area. Is that the sole source of the reclamation? It was my understanding that once we issue a permit for gravel, that there's steps made to make sure there's restoration included. And you indicate here that unreclaimed abandoned pits are an issue. What sources are there for reclamation of these pits once we're done pulling the gravel out?
Yeah, that's a great question, Madam Chair. Commissioner Ebbinger, so a lot of the, the unreclaimed abandoned pits are very old. The mechanism that we have in place now for ensuring that reclamation happens is first having it as a condition of the permit, as you had mentioned, and then requiring a performance bond or a bond.
Commissioner Campbell, our county engineer is watching and, and did comment that we have examined that, and Clay County currently is collecting more than Becker County, but they will continue to look into it.
Oh, I, I'm, yeah, I'm assuming that we, we are, but I, I guess my question is still the numbers are down, you know, and why are they down? They're, I think it's important for us, it just doesn't seem like they should, like the numbers should be down.
Yeah, it's a little counterintuitive.
Right. Thank you.
2022 projects, a lot of these are just kind of wrapping up 2021 projects at this point. So looking at the comprehensive and transportation plan update, the, the Planning Commission did make a recommendation for adoption to the Board of Commissioners. I'm just waiting on getting a final draft that I want, and what I want to do, would like to do is print it out, provide it to you, and just want to make sure that you all have appropriate amount of time to, to look at it and review it before holding a, a public hearing at, at this board, if that, if that makes sense to you all. So I'm hoping to have that today. The Buffalo River Flood Insurance Study, we did send out landowner notices, and now FEMA is looking at something again, so hopefully we'll have that done this summer.
Well, I'm, I'm hopeful if they look at something and costs are incurred that they could pay for it. It's not going to happen, but that's, that's something that I, wow, we've worked on for a long time, and we need to wrap up for landowners.
Yep, absolutely. I think it'll provide a lot of relief to landowners in terms of flood insurance premiums. So.
Commissioner Campbell?
Do, do they send you something to sign off on that, the FEMA, for the?
The Community Acknowledgment Form? Yeah, yep, they would do that.
Has that happened yet?
That has not happened yet, yep. So, once I, once I do receive that, I would, my, I think the, the proper procedure would be to bring that to this board, because it is essentially a zoning change, to have this board make a motion to, to adopt the new flood map. That'd be, be appropriate, so. And then we are also close to having an online permitting application. I think within the next month, we should be, be ready to go live with that, which should, which should make, streamline the building permit process. And it's my hope that if, if that works out well, we could maybe even expand that to other types of permits, conditional use permits, interim use permits, variance requests, just to make that process easier for, for folks. Any questions for me at all?
Well, I want to extend my appreciation to the folks that serve on the Board of Adjustment and Planning Commission committees. Those land use decisions are really difficult, and those folks really work hard to make decisions the best that they can, and, and sometimes those Planning Commission nights are very long, so thank you to them for that. But also appreciation to you and your department. You really have fielded, fielded lots of challenges, and the, I'm not hearing any negative feedback in terms of how they're treated with your department. Certainly, you've allowed for doc, ease of document use to either get things online or submit them in different ways. And so thank you for continuing to grow with the needs of the county. You're doing a great job. And, and I, I think that it has been interesting, as we've had conversations for the 2020, of the, the comprehensive plan, to hear what the needs and, and input of our citizens and different organizations. We really do our best to mitigate the land that we have in the best possible way. You can't have the exorbitant, exorbitant growth that Fargo-Moore has had without a lot of resources coming out of Clay County, and I think that's one thing that's really exciting, but it's also difficult to weigh the wants and needs. So thank you for helping us navigate those challenges.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners?
Any other questions? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next item on the agenda is item 10, the request to send out an RFP for the inmate and juvenile detention healthcare services. Our juvenile center superintendent, James, is here, along with Carrie, our correctional facility administrator. The sheriff is here as well, and Katie, Katie Wright?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Good morning.
Morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners, we're here today to request to send out an RFP, which is a request for a proposal for healthcare services for our juvenile center and correctional facility. It's been reviewed by the county attorney. It's, our current contract is up in about three to four months, so we're looking to get it out there as soon as possible and see what we can get.
I'd like to take a second here to, sorry, to introduce our new Assistant Jail Administrator.
Yay!
Yep, most of you probably know her from when we were working on the new facility. Katie was an involved part of that, and she's been basically the backbone of the Clay County Correctional Facility for the last 25 years, and she's been basically priceless to me. So, Katie Johnson.
Welcome, Katie, congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to serve.
And actually, you, yes, you were very instrumental in the creation of the new facility, and certainly were helpful as we molded what the vision was for the mental health piece, the component. You were really important, offering feedback on that, so thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Ebbinger?
Welcome to Katie, but I also want to jump back on, on the request here. My understanding is mend the current holder of the, for both facilities of the contract. There, there's fairly problematic response from them right now. If we have an RFP on this, do you intend to try and initiate it as soon as possible? Or do we need to wait till the other contract expires?
Madam Chair Commissioner, I think with the RFP and the current state of things, I think we would be able to make a move either way. I guess we would just confer with county attorney's office and the contracts, and I think that we, we've got, we, we know what we want for services, and we expect that.
Well, the AMC conference we attended recently, the Public Safety Committee, I've talked to the Sheriff of Dakota County and some other people, and this, we're not alone in our problem with this, with this vendor or this resource. And, you know, I, I certainly hope that we can find someone that can provide the services and initiate it as soon as possible.
We'd like to move now. I'm sorry, we'd like to move right away, if we could.
I would like to move the request for the RFP.
Second.
We have a motion to approve sending out an RFP by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Are there any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the request is granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
James, you have the next item. Item 11 this morning is the request to accept a grant from the Minnesota Office of Justice Programs.
Yes, Madam Chair Commissioners, I applied for a grant to help subsidize some of the costs that we endured over the pandemic, staying up to guidance with Centers for Disease Control. And there was a gap in funds available, and this, this grant will allow us to pay for some of that PPE and staff coverage, because when our staff, 95% of the juvenile center staff, when they're gone or sick, there needs to be somebody else there, so, so that's what, we've been awarded up to $24,408.
Thank you for seeking out additional revenue streams. That's always helpful, and thank you for writing for the grant. Are there any questions from the board? Board wishes?
Move for approval of the grant.
Second.
There is a motion to approve the grant from Commissioner Ebbinger, a second from Commissioner Campbell. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the request is granted. Thank you very much, James. And then item 12 as well. You have a request to fill a vacancy for a juvenile worker in your security unit.
Yes, Madam Chair Commissioners, I'm requesting permission to fill a vacancy that we have. It's in our 2022 budget. It's necessary for our staffing plan so we can operate safely and effectively. There won't be much of a savings, there will be no negative impact, but there won't be much of a savings, the, this individual is with us for about nine months, I want to say.
Okay. Board questions? It is a 2022 included position.
Move approval. Second.
Motion to approve the request from Commissioner Campbell, a second from Commissioner Ebbinger. Are there any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the request is granted. Thank you very much, James.
Thank you.
Item 13 this morning is a request for support in seeking ARPA funds to increase the capacity and retention for our family childcare and child foster care in Clay County. Good morning, Rhonda and team.
Good morning, Madam Chair Commissioners. We are here to talk about a proposal that we brought before the ARPA committee.
Can you turn your mics on?
Oh. There we go. I'll start over. Okay, we're here to talk about a proposal we brought before the ARPA committee last week in regards to our childcare, family licensed childcare, as well as family licensed foster homes. The proposal we've submitted has 10 different items or so there that are all aimed at recruitment, retention, training of, of our foster homes. Things that our licensors have kind of heard out in the field over the years, as well as various meetings that we've been at in terms of what are some of the barriers or struggles some of our family licensed childcare homes are having. As you know, this is a statewide and perhaps a national issue in terms of some of the shortages for childcare homes, particularly infant care or non-traditional kinds of childcare services. So some of these items are aimed at addressing some of that. We know that it does not encompass all of the issues that we face out there, but they were some items that were low-hanging and right at the top of our list of things that we could achieve pretty quickly. So I'm going to let maybe Jessica talk a little bit about the areas, and we'll be open for questions.
Well, and I'll just kind of speak to how we came to this. So there are other incentives being offered throughout the state that had more to do with startup funding, and so we kind of wanted to stay away from that, so we weren't duplicating initiatives that are already being utilized with ARPA funds.
I think we should probably comment that up to $17,000 are available for those grants, and I agree, we, and this is something that we didn't want to reduplicate, things that were out there. Certainly, if we can get the information out to people that those are available, how do we best do that was part of this discussion as well.
Exactly, yes. And, you know, we've already met with one marketing firm, and I did ask that they assist us with developing some ways to let, you know, if it, whether it's a center or a family childcare, know what the incentives are. know what the incentives are available for startup fees. So, Child Care Aware has a $2,000 startup grant, and then First Children's Finance has up to a $15,000 startup grant for family childcare and a $20,000 startup grant for centers. And it doesn't have to specifically just be for startups, it can be like remodeling and, you know, other areas that the daycare providers have identified as a need. But, so the areas that we kind of focused on, we're developing ideas to really improve that capacity. We've identified a strong need for additional infant care spots in Clay County. That seems to be the biggest complaint that we hear from families when they're seeking daycare in the area, is the lack of infant spots. So, we do have one incentive specific to that area, and as Rhonda already mentioned, the non-traditional daycare hours. So, for our first responders, nursing staff, you know, people who don't work that 8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday job, we wanted to come up with ideas to incentivize providers to offer, you know, whether it be daycare hours available on weekends or evenings and potentially even some overnights, so.
We can certainly go through item by item unless we just want to, if there's any specific questions. In addition to what we have here, I will pass out, one of the things that we talked about is creating pamphlet that would also be an electronic version that would include or encompass as many resources as childcare providers might need to access in one spot. So, it might list where, you know, on our county website, we have various resources, but then the State Department of Human Services has various resources. If these items are approved, we would have these additional resources along with other, the food support program, other grants and loans. So, we started just a sample list, and we're going to work with Mark Sloan in GIS in terms of how best to put this document together, but we thought that was a good idea as well because the information can be overwhelming and located in many different spots, but we also want to make sure that it's a resource easily updatable as things change and additional resources become available. So, I'll pass that out as well.
Well, you know, certainly the board has this whole document in front of them for issues that your team identified that could really help bolster services that are already available, but also identify barriers for either current or new providers. I think the, to allow current and new applicants, reimbursement of their licensing fees for two years is something that we couldn't or didn't do during the first, the business reimbursements for their business application permitting fees. I think that's something that's really important. It allows providers to not have to pay for that, to control those dollars back into their center, but certainly providing local training opportunities at no cost is really important to make sure that we're helping our providers be the best providers that they can be, offering them tools in the toolkit. Certainly, none of us knew how to deal with a pandemic, but now I think we can maybe offer some input and allow mentors in our community to help with providers as well to maybe have those conversations of the concerns that our licensers hear, to answer those questions or where to go and how to mitigate that. I think the other piece that our ARPA committee talked about is to offer, incentivize some of this, to incentivize non-traditional hours. That's a concern that we're hearing in our workforce community through businesses is they're not able to secure workers on non-traditional hours because there aren't any childcare opportunities. So, maybe this will stir someone to open up a facility or a home daycare that allows for those options. And I think the other piece that was really important in this conversation was to identify some of the foster care barriers that we're seeing in terms of daycare for foster children, but also incentivizing new foster care families. I think that's an important piece that we've heard for years as a challenge within the county. So, certainly, any commissioner could ask questions on this, but felt that you, both Julie and Karen, had identified the barriers that we could address as soon as possible, and that's what we're trying to do with this.
Commissioner Kaylee?
So, many, many times I have shared with this board anecdotes from meetings that I've attended where families have shared their struggles in accessing quality childcare and early education opportunities, where business owners have shared their struggles in operating in this industry, and where workers have shared their challenges in remaining in a field where they are not compensated for the important work that they do at a level that they should be. I'm excited that you're bringing this forward, and you've said this is, you know, the low-hanging fruit, the easily addressable things, and there's some really good things in here. So, I am going to support it, but I'm also disappointed because there's nothing in here for our childcare centers. And when we want to efficiently increase capacity, a childcare center can do that much more quickly than a family childcare setting. So, they are a piece of the puzzle as well and should not be ignored. I understand that they're licensed by the state, and family childcare is licensed by the county. But it's a part of the conversation I feel was missing. They are business owners, and we've offered business relief to a variety of businesses, and I feel like they should be included as well. Their workers need training, they need fire extinguishers, they could benefit from incentives as well. So, I hope we can take a look at ways that we can serve that need as well as a part of this probably most critical industry. I mean, they're taking care of our children who are developing 90% of their brains before they turn five, so this early ed years is hugely important to our future.
Yeah, and Commissioner Kaylee, if I could just comment, you know, you're absolutely right, childcare centers is a need as well. And we did talk a little bit about childcare centers, and I think perhaps it might be a little different discussion on how we might be able to support them with the different licensing requirements, training requirements, and some of the outreach and recruitment that the state does, and how we might be able to partner a little bit in that area with them. So, I think that's a piece that we can revisit and look at how they might, may or may not, fit into some of the areas that we've listed here. I know Julie and Karen have had conversations, this isn't necessarily about childcare centers, but with various entities about some of the pod-style childcare arrangements that have been as a point of discussion. You've spoken with folks in Burnsville and Yulin and, or a provider that's looking at something in Morehead, so I think you guys have had some good conversations about models separate from just, you know, family licensed homes, so I think that's really good as well. But yeah, we certainly do not disagree that our needs in childcare centers are there as well.
And I know you've kind of seeked to answer that question by saying there are these other grants available, but in my conversations, they are aware of these grants, but they're having a hard time using those grants to meet their needs. For example, some of the excluded costs would be major renovation, new construction, and the centers that are looking to expand, I mean, you can't increase the footprint of your facility. You, so it's difficult to fit into the box for some of these grant opportunities.
Well, I really appreciate that your team came with items that we could address right away. I certainly am under the opinion, same as our conversation with the city of Morehead, that the city of Morehead is better when rural Clay County is better and rural Clay County vice versa. And I feel that by addressing some of the needs with these types of services, it certainly will aid the centers. And so, I possibly disagree that none of this will benefit centers, but I think that's beyond the point. I just want to thank staff for identifying the issues that we could control as quickly as possible.
Commissioner Campbell?
This has been an ongoing discussion for quite some time about the need for good childcare within all communities, whether it's Clay County, the state of Minnesota, or nationally, and the shortage that are there, and the frustrations and the difficulties getting started in a lot of cases. I think what we've asked our staffing people to do was to come up with some good recommendations, and I think there were some really good recommendations that was brought forward. And fortunately, right now, to implement these, we have the ability to also access some ARPA funds, and that's where this request is coming from, and they certainly all qualify under the rules for ARPA. I like this, I was the one who brought up the idea, the pamphlet, I'm going to say it outright, whether you like it or not, but I think it's something that, I think any time that we can promote the thought of being a childcare provider in home or a foster parent in home is still a good thing. And the idea in mind to use today's technology that would allow somebody to, when they see a little advertising that we might talk about doing, they can take their phone, they can scan that little code and get access to all this information, including links to different opportunities, whether it is at the county level or state level, that's what you talked about, Rhonda, I think is really a positive. And you look down on this sheet that Julie handed out here, and the bullet points down on the bottom, the initiatives that are there, there's some really good ones. I also like the idea of a mentorship where you have somebody who's new coming into this as a new childcare provider, being able to go to an experienced childcare provider with issues that have been wrong, or not wrong, I didn't mean that word, but that they're having difficulty with, or maybe they didn't anticipate. And so, how do you resolve those and move around those things? And there's nothing better than to talk to somebody who's experienced it and knows how to do it. So, this mentorship program, the very first thing on there, I think is excellent. The licensing thing, the reimbursement, I think is really, you know, I just think it's a good way to try to also encourage, you know, we talk about new ones, it's important for us to retain too what we have, so we don't lose any more. I think the numbers, I asked the numbers at one time, I think our current numbers, Julie, are around 130?
Oh, 135.
And at one time, that was significantly more, wasn't it?
As far as I've, the last eight years, it's been staying the same. We get new ones in as some retire and that kind of thing. We do have about six in process outside of that 135.
Okay, but Rhonda, wasn't one of those numbers?
Yeah, in 2015, we've lost about 60 providers since 2015.
Yeah. So, but you gained some, you know, so, yeah. Anyway, you know, we had extensive talks about this, as a matter of fact, I think that was probably, for this topic, I think we spent more time in our ARPA committee on this one issue than we have anything else from ARPA or CARES meetings because of the importance of it. I mean, it's not a lot of dollar amounts that are there, but the impacts that they can have are still helpful moving forward. Moving into the childcare center issues, I think Rhonda is right, we need to have a different conversation when it comes to that because, you know, we need to be responsible and be able to act on things that are in our ability to license to in Clay County. We don't license the centers. That doesn't mean they're not needed and that we shouldn't support it, but that is a different conversation. And then the non-traditional hours, I think, is something of interest to promote as well, so. I just want to thank all of you for bringing all of these options together, and I'm looking forward to a flyer with a little code thing on it you can scan and get the information on.
Commissioner Kaylee?
And again, I know I'm coming across very negative, and I'm sorry, but this is a very good list, from what I have heard, talking to business owners, this does address a lot of needs, and thank you, this is a good list for family childcare and addressing some of the needs of the child foster care community, so.
I do know that, you know, as we watch different bills move through the legislature too, we'll see, hopefully we'll see some investments that might impact childcare centers as well as family childcare homes, and so hopefully we'll have, see some impact there as well.
But that's also something where we really can't wait. Just on the 25th, I had a very large center owner in Clay County tell me, quote unquote, "I am at the end of my rope." They are looking at closing, and that would have a huge impact on our young families. So, they just can't compete when Walmart down the road is offering significantly higher wages than they can offer their staff, and then they can't offer their staff insurance on top of that, so.
Staffing is a huge issue for centers as well as many providers. But yeah, definitely, and we can connect and kind of wade through some of those issues and see if there's different ideas or options that might be appropriate to address at our level.
I think it's important, we all have a platform that is, we have quick access to our leaders at the state that are making important decisions on how to mitigate dispersal of state funds, and childcare has been an issue for a long time. I remember when I first had my son Bridger, my mom said, "Good luck with childcare." It's been a nightmare since I was with you. And so, this is not something that has not been a present problem for a long time, but I think that we need to take those conversations that we're having with local business owners and families and make sure we're projecting that at the state level. I'm on the Minnesota Rural Counties Committee, and not once has anyone ever said childcare is a major issue in our communities, which is unfortunate because it really is, and even on A-level conversations, we're having those discussions. So, I really think that we need to make this AMC priorities and continue to find ways to deal with what we can. And this action today is us identifying what we can mitigate right away, and certainly need to have those conversations at all levels to see what we can deal with.
Commissioner Campbell?
Madam Chair, as I mentioned, this was discussed quite a bit with ARPA, and I would move that we authorize the $81,000 ARPA funds with the 10 bullet points presented today with the dollar amounts attached to each one. And in addition to that, as we review this, that further consideration can be given.
We have a motion to approve the request for $81,000 of ARPA funds.
Second.
A second by, the first was Commissioner Campbell, the second was Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner Ebinger?
Just looking at this, I know when we have our committee meetings down the road, this may be a specific thing we want to address. I'm not as informed of this as I would like to be, and I know we're limited to two commissioners that can talk on an issue. It sounds like it's been pretty well discussed in ARPA, but it's not something where the information or the opportunity for input gets beyond that. It might be something, as urgent as I think it is, that we might want to schedule down the road to have a committee discussion on.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Speaking to the urgency piece, we just met.
Speaking to the urgency piece, we just met on this ARPA item last week. And so usually Commissioner Campbell and I try to best update the board on those meetings. But because it was such an urgent issue, wanted to make sure that we had this before the board. So I apologize that we haven't been able to give our committee reports on that. I can give it to you in a half hour, not that that does anything, but certainly your concern is noted.
Okay, thank you.
I, we could have, we could have waited and had them give this presentation a week from now so that we could give our committee reports, but we felt it was important to get it on here now and get this thing moving, so. But I, I agree with you that we, more discussion on this needs to happen in the future. I don't know what part of a committee it will be, but this is something we'll have to constantly talk about.
Well, I think the, the need to expedite is apparent. But somewhere down the road, I think as a, as an entire commission, this is important enough to where we want to try and approach it together.
We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll look for that information in the child, kid source in my kid's backpack. Thank you. Item 14 this morning, our highway engineer, David Overbow, is here with three items for our discussion. Good morning, Dave.
Good morning. First item is agreement and resolution for the LPP Cooperative Project in the city of Glendon with Clay County, Glendon, and the state. The agreement itself is capped at $410,000. That's the funding that we get from the state. And it breaks down to $379,629.63, and that's for the construction. So that's what they'll pay for the share of the construction. And then they do also include construction engineering, which would be mostly Clay County and possibly a little bit of the consultant. But for the most part, our staff will be taking care of it. But that's $30,370.37, so that's how that adds up. Like I said, we're, we're moving forward on it. If you remember, we've been kind of working on that condemnation. There was a little condemnation hiccup there. We're still not completely through that. I think we're darn close. But that's kind of the, we'd be advertising for this thing if, if we didn't have that last little thing to tie up on there. It is, I just talked to the state this morning, and you know, those, those, those light components are backed up like everything else in this country. But that, you know, we're hoping to still get it done this year. But that's the one thing, is once we do get permission to advertise, we'll bring it to this board, and we'll get a thing in the paper and, and get a bid letting. But I'm a little worried to see how the components for the new signal, or you know, when we move that signal back there to make room for the turn lane, how that's going to fit. But I guess we'll, more information to follow on that.
Good. Great. Thank you very much for the report on that. Are there any questions from the board? You need, we need an approval of the agreement and also Resolution 2022-13, correct?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Ebbinger to approve, is that, to approve both of them?
That would be my motion, yes. The Resolution 2022-13 and contract.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Ebbinger to approve. Second, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Thank you. Item B, Dave, this morning, is your approval of the dust control quote.
Right, this is our annual solicitation for dust control quotes. We sent that out. We did get more bidders this year, but the prices did come in a little bit higher. I guess we feel fortunate, the contractors, the same one we had last year, and we had good luck with them. Glacier Dust Control out of Fargo, the price is up about 10 and a half cents from last year. Did have a conversation with him just to find out kind of what's going, you know. It's not a huge increase, but I was curious, you know. And it wasn't so much the cost of the salt itself. He was pretty well protected because he buys a lot of salt. A lot, you know, it's just like anything, I guess it's mostly diesel fuel and labor costs that spiked that up a little bit. I guess I, I still think it's, it's affordable, it's doable. What we do upon approval from this board is we send the, you know, the information out to all the residents that we have on our running list. And we give them a certain amount of time to get the information back to us. We put together a map, then we meet with the contractor, and we kind of hand it off. You know, we used to be the middleman many years ago, where we would also cash flow this and that. We had very problematic, but, and it's worked pretty well now. We get the contractors in charge with the local residents that are interested in this. And I think a lot of people that are, that do it are very happy with it. They have really good results. We have really good results. We have been actually using more and more chloride lately as, for longer stretches. It really does a nice job. It, it holds the road in place. You don't lose a lot of your, your fine dust in the air, as well, it keeps the road in a little better shape. And it, it works, and it, it also gives our guys a little bit longer time before they get back there and need to maintain this road. So we've had really good luck with it. We will, we will, we do, you know, we probably do $60,000 to $80,000 just alone with Clay County dollars on certain roads. We always do very high-traffic gravel roads. We'll do the very ends of them because that's when people are stopping and starting and washboard up. So we do it there. And there's, you know, other areas that have, we partnership with a couple of businesses, large businesses in town that, not in town, but in the county. As some of their, some of the business that, that they do, it just creates, we'd almost have to have a blade out there daily if we didn't cooperate with some of these folks, so.
Thank you, Dave. I just want to say I appreciate your department's presence in the conversations that are having at the planning commission, dust control happen. That discussion happens a lot, particularly with these bigger organizations that we're permitting. And, and I know it takes a coordinated effort in terms of the, who's running the, the operator, and then what they're putting down, if it's just water and/or the dust control. So I, I think that's, I appreciate that conversation. I think we need to continue to have that because, you know, there was a couple pits last year that it was just a haze. And I know that, that coordinating with Matt on, in terms of what needs to happen out there is important to hear that perspective. And then also, I, I know that in terms of having the map of, of what landowners are participating and, and what the operator is making sure not to blade over that. I think that, that in the last couple of years, you've done a good job in, in addressing those concerns. So I appreciate that continuing to move forward in those discussions as well.
Definitely a lot of moving parts.
Yeah, definitely. Commissioner Campbell.
I move approval of the 2022 local quote from Glacier Dust Control.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the quote with Glacier Dust Control by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Are there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Item 14C is the approval to advertise for CASA 12.
Yes, this is for a large mill and overlay project on County Road 12. Starts at the Red River, and it goes easterly to County Road 11. It's a real big project. If you remember right, we've got three big paving projects this year, two have federal aid, and we're literally minutes away from getting approval to do the same on those. In fact, one of them is just about ready, but I think it's going to be delayed a week just because the advertising dates are on Monday, and board approval is on Tuesday. And I didn't get approval for County Road 31 until like yesterday. So we're going to be just a week or two behind with those ones. But we'd really like to get this one out for bid as quick as we can. We've been hearing the price per ton is at least up about $10 per ton. And all I hear is speculation that it's going to get worse. It's going to get worse. So the sooner we can get out there, the better. We got, like I said, we got three really big projects. We have a lot of our dollars this year is going into asphalt paving. So we're, we're keeping our fingers crossed that we can, you know, that the prices don't come in to make very hard decisions, so.
Unless there's any other questions.
I just have a comment in terms of timeline. When are you anticipating this is a major commuter route, but also commodity hauling as well? Are you hoping to be done before the harvest?
Yes, yep, absolutely. Of course, you know, scheduling is going to be tricky. Like I think we had mentioned at previous board meetings, this one would remain open to traffic. County Road 52 is a much more extensive overlay. That's down to the existing old concrete panels from the 30s. That one will have phased shutdowns into a point of probably three different phases. But scheduling, you're right, is going to be absolutely crucial this summer.
Yeah, as approved as part of our five-year plan, I would move that we advertise for the CASA 12 Melon Overlay Project.
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve the request.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The request is granted. Thank you very much, Dave.
And then just to note for the public that aren't here, I guess, you know, looking at the bid letting date of May 10th, so.
Oh, good to know. Thank you. Yes. Item 15 this morning is our annual department update from our, the probation district supervisor, Janelle Chaney. Good morning, Janelle.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners, others. Thank you for having me this morning. For this year's annual update, I just kind of did a snapshot. We haven't added to our staffing level, but we did have two backfills. That was Paige Olson and Paige McDowell. Great additions thus far. They're kind of still in the training phases and stuff, but they came from other organizations and so brought talent and experience with them. So that's been beneficial. I offered just kind of a snapshot of caseloads. We continue to have three juvenile agents. We have 89 juveniles on supervision currently in the community. Of those 89, 11 are in placement, likely different levels of placement. Some may be in foster care or therapeutic foster homes or secure placement, non-secure, those kind of things. We do have two adult gross misdemeanor misdemeanor agents. As of March 30th, they had 104 adults on supervision. Again, we have different supervision levels. Some are enhanced, have more contact throughout the month. We have medium and we have minimum risk levels that they supervise according to. If I look ahead of those 104 individuals, 44 of those individuals are participating in the domestic violence treatment court. That's kind of a high number. We do have a large domestic violence treatment court that's ongoing. There are agents that also supervise individuals that are involved in that treatment court at the felony level. I believe that some Fargo residents are, or they're supervised by North Dakota agents, but they weren't, their case wasn't transferable to Clay County. And so there are a couple that are supervised by North Dakota agents as well. So that kind of continues. They've seen an impact because of COVID. They haven't had in-person review hearings, but they've kind of had great communication, identifying who would need a review hearing. And they've done those through Zoom, and I think that they're in the planning phases of how to bring that back in person. We have one other specialty court, or I should say two, drug court and veterans court. They're combined. We have approximately 16 individuals participating in the drug court and one individual in veterans court. We have four people that are currently in the pre-trial support program. It was pre-trial supervision. There's been ongoing consistent conversations about what to call this, and what should it look like, and how to best meet the needs within the county. It was at the state level as well. There were many stakeholders brought together to look at what is evidence-based practice as far as pre-trial services. And they identify in lieu of calling it supervision to reference it as support. And really what it is, is helping to support those individuals that otherwise would have been held in custody to allow them to be released, but support their ability to make it to their next court appearance, maintain in the community access resources if they need assistance in doing that. I touched a little bit on the juvenile offender restitution program. We reference that as JORP. We utilize our supervision fees that are collected throughout the year to reimburse victims of juvenile offenses. Juveniles are able to do community work service and earn funds that would then go directly to victims. I'll note that that decreased substantially. I think in the past years, we have put about $7,000 to $8,000 towards repayment to victims of crimes. And this year it was about almost reaching 2,000. That was specific to COVID-19 inability to set up sites or work that off because different locations or the crew wasn't active because of that social distancing and keeping capacities down to a certain level. So we do hope to see an increase with that and to continue utilizing that. That is a great resource. Otherwise, victims often don't receive payment for lost costs on their part. We also utilize our supervision fees this past year for a girls' group. We took refer, or referrals from social services and the schools. And two of our juvenile agents facilitated a girls' group. We tried to make that countywide, that it wasn't specific only to Morehead, but to really incorporate those that are in kind of those outlying areas within the county that everyone had that opportunity. I think that we had three to four people, individuals successfully complete that program. The agent staff looked for things that would entice our teenagers to participate and gain life skills through that program. So we hope to continue that as well. I note that Lindsay Turnus recently approached me. She identified that there's some youth in our community over the summer months may not be able to access lunches or meals. Some of them are on our work restitution crew, and she hoped to meet that need. And so we're communicating with the schools to see if there's any. I know sometimes they have lunch programs available that are at no cost. And so we just want to make sure that we don't overlap. Some of the youth that we work with don't attend school any longer, and so I'm not sure if they would be able to access that or not. One of the other things that I would like to offer is that we've used our supervision fees for bus passes. The agents approached me and indicated that many of the families and clients have difficulty getting to appointments, whether it's treatment, counseling, court, because they don't have transportation, may not be able to afford the public transportation system. And so we've tried to be consistent with looking at who would benefit from accessing bus passes to be able to make it to some of their programming and stuff. Sentence-to-service program, I appeared recently and provided an update. We did post that position for a crew leader. That closed on March 31st. We have five applicants, and we will be looking to set up some interviews. I've asked Joe Olson with the county and Carrie, who appeared the earlier jail administrator, to assist with those interviews. So hopefully we can get that program underway soon. In addition, we have helped to facilitate a victim impact panel within the community. We probably have 25 to 30 individuals participate in that that are court-ordered on a quarterly basis. MAD program has helped us with that. They recently had some staffing changes, and so they, we were to do one April 7th in person. However, they have tabled that because of staffing changes on their end. We recognize that that's a really important option for individuals. We, we like to have, there's, there's accountability, and then there are recommendations or things that the court orders that lend to rehabilitation. And we really feel like education and programming is what really leads to change behavior. And so we, we hope to keep that going. And at this time, are looking at some different options. Right now, individuals pay a $50 participant fee to attend a panel. And so I'm kind of looking at if we were to do a panel on our own within the county, collecting data and presenting something similar, if those funds can come directly into Clay County and be utilized to reinvest. One of the things that I have down to just offer is, one concern... within Clay County that's becoming more and more prevalent is the lack of outpatient treatment or education for our youth. You know, we, we don't have any in Clay County for youth for an outpatient treatment program. And so our youth are trying to access in Fargo or Detroit Lakes. And Detroit Lakes is quite the commute for a juvenile who may or may not have a driver's license, and that may fall upon their parent to get them to and from. What we've seen in Fargo is that they have wait lists or, you know, sometimes, you know, seeking, it's good to have as many options as possible to meet the need of the youth, not that they all have to access the one that's available. And so that's kind of becoming a, a critical need in our community. I have had a few conversations with the number of businesses, bars, breweries, and that seems to be in the adult world. But I, I feel like we're not following up with some support services for the individuals that are impacted by that social activity by parents or, or those kind of things. So that's a high need. So maybe if we look to do a panel in the community, some of those funds could be looked to reinvest in our youth and provide some programming and support for them as well. No, no changes with the budget. We're pretty consistent. Stay within our set budget. I would note in 2021, the IT kind of transitioned over to the state, so that should be some cost savings. Just want to highlight, there is a legislative proposal, justice reinvestment, recognizing, and it probably is more so this year than any year coming out of COVID-19 and what we've seen with individuals and, you know, mental health and chemical dependency with any population, but certainly those that are involved in the justice system. Really looking at how do we meet the needs within the communities and not focus our attention and resources with those that are in custody, but rather, how do we help support people in each community? And so they are looking at, there is language, and hopefully, it will go forward with 50%, 50% reimbursement to the county. Currently, Clay County has a contract with the state. Clay County looks to reimburse, or the state looks to reimburse 29.7% of the funds for the contract office, whereas in the statute, it does reference 50%. And so hopefully, we can get to that 50%, and that would be a cost savings for the county. They are looking, they're requesting 25 million towards community supervision, but that includes the community, the community probation offices, the Community Corrections Act probation departments, and the DOC. So we currently have three delivery systems, four if you look at the tribal entities that are now involved in supervision. And so trying to, they'll have to make some decisions as to how that plays out with each delivery system. But right now, it's just a proposal. And the other one is, the other thing that's in legislation, and this does come up quite often with our Sheriff's Department, they've done an amazing job of communicating when we do, they receive notice that we have an individual picked up, whether it's in Florida, California, Texas. They will reach out to our office and inquire, what are we picking them up on? Is it interstate, compact related? What is our need to go pick them up? And we try to work through that as best as possible. There is a huge cost to transporting individuals back to Clay County and have their hearing resolve the violation. Most often, when probation is transferring out, it's related to having family member in another, another state. Sometimes, they're just driving through on the interstate. They get picked up, they get a charge. We look to transfer people to reduce homelessness in our community. We don't want to make people stay in Clay County that don't have ties to Clay County. And so we, you know, before transferring to another state, they have to have a pretty significant plan of how they're going to be successful and be supported in that other state. But it is a huge cost. And so in the proposal through legislation, they are looking to figure out a way to reimburse counties for that. So hopefully, that goes through as well. And the Department of Corrections is supportive of that. One of the other concerns that I have that hopefully, we have a criminal justice stakeholders meeting later on today, homelessness. I know that there's been a couple of committees, but homelessness right now is critical. Thankfully, we're headed into the summer months. Maybe not such a crisis, but we have, the Grand Inn has recently sold. That used to be an amazing resource for us. Reached out, we only have two hotels now in Clay County, or in Morehead, I should say. And neither one of them will take justice-involved individuals. Not, you know, we've kind of tried to look at some language, you know, if there was no violence, violent offense within the last two years, or five years, or 10 years. But they're, they're pretty rigid in who they'll take within their facilities. So that is a huge concern. Yesterday, I spent most of the day trying to work with an individual who is homeless and had been, will need to be out of the Grand Inn by April 12th, and just looking at resources. And for people that, you know, right now, that individual is trying to save up enough money, trying to find a landlord that will lease to that individual, but they have a felony on their record. And, and if that individual becomes homeless, that certainly isn't healthy or beneficial for our community. So that's one of the other concerns. I also wanted to offer that our Commissioner, Paul Schnell, with the Department of Corrections, will be coming through Morehead on April 29th. And if any of you guys wish to meet with him, join our staff as we meet with him, that invite is open to you.
Thank you.
I don't have a time at, at this point, but I can get that out to you guys.
I'm just impressed that it's April 5th, and you know your Commissioner is coming on the 29th. That's a lot of planning that sometimes you're not afforded, so that's great.
Yes.
Questions. David Ebinger.
Yes. Paul and I were, served on some committees together when he was Police Chief. And just drop me in there, let me know when.
All right.
I'd like to see him just, he's coming through Morehead. It'd be good to see him again. He has been helpful to this county on other issues involving our juvenile detention. So.
Yeah.
Count me in.
Will do. Thank you.
And additionally, we, we were lined up for a pilot program on dosage probation. I think that's a direction I hope we're moving. But is there an opportunity for us to do that again? And what, I assume it was, somebody else had better community resources to contribute towards that? What was, if there's an area we should focus on to try and improve, was that identified to us?
Great question. Thank you. We were not chosen to pilot the dosage supervision. I was not offered any feedback as to why, why not. I believe that we had an amazing package. At the last minute, they had asked for a list of resources. And then we also have an assessment tool, and they wanted me to align, like, of all these resources in the Fargo-Morehead area, which ones would address each risk component, each risk area. And so after doing that, I honestly feel like, given that it was a pilot, that we had a wealth of resources between Fargo and Morehead in many of the areas. And in a pilot situation, they may want to start out on a smaller scale and work with those because they really, in this pilot, they would have been looking to work with all the service providers as well, to ensure that the programming was evidence-based practice. And so that would have taken a lot of time and energy to work with Lakes and Prairies, Lake of Mental Health, our many resources. And so I think they just chose it to be on a, a smaller scale. The conversations with the agents has been, let's move forward with identifying what programming is appropriate. Let, we don't have to wait to pilot it. We can certainly go down that path. We have always taken into consideration people that invest their time and energy in programming while they're on supervision. And if, as soon as they're done with what was court ordered and what was recommended, and then they give a period of maintaining, we look to submit an early discharge. So they are earning that. We just haven't been in the practice of counting hours or looking at specific hours of programming. And so we definitely want to go down that road, and will. Yep.
Any other comments? Great work. Thank you so much for the update. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is our committee reports, and we are about 15 minutes behind, but I know we have two weeks worth of meetings. So, yes, yep. So Commissioner Campbell, would you like to go?
I will. First off, on the 20, March 21st, we had a personal issues committee meeting. We just discussed the extension secretary position, which we acted on today with University of Minnesota. We did have some conversation, a follow-up conversation regarding a solid waste mechanic position, which is, we continue to talk about it. There's no recommendation moving forward on that yet. On the, March 23rd, I attended the Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Meeting. The, we did find out that the north wall had extensive steel that needed to be replaced, and to, to about 50,000 or 60,000. But there's other steam cells and things that are offsetting that, which make it kind of a washout. So other than that, everything else at Prairie Lakes is going well. That afternoon, I attended a diversion authority land management meeting. Not a lot going on at that, other than we got our property access and status report. Thursday morning, the 24th, I attended the solid waste advisory committee meeting. We got a report from construction engineers. We got a landfill project update from Comstock. There continues to be some issues there regarding the project at the landfill. We did have a presentation on a shredder that was very interesting. And then some, we had some other general updates. That day, I also attended the MCC JPA, the Morehead Clay County Joint Powers Authority regarding the diversion. And we did, we did approve a, one appraisal and a, and a residential housing differential payment. We approved the Heartland Seed summer, negotiated settlement on, on that property. And then we did, we acted on a hay license. That afternoon, we had the diversion authority meeting. And on that one, items of note, the groundbreaking for the channel is, the date has been set for that with Red River Alliance on June 28th. So that's when they're actually going to be putting shovels in the ground for the, the big ditch. The Red River Control Structure was, the low bid on that was awarded by the Corps of Engineers in the amount of $115 million to Ames Construction, which is a Minnesota company. And by the way, that project was estimated to be about $130 million. So there was, that bit came a nice. On the 30th, we had the ARPA meeting. And the, we had a little bit of discussion regarding some reimbursements on the ethnic community and diversity coordinator position, minor little issues there. And then, of course, the, the topic of the day was the childcare, which we heard about today. On Friday, we all, April 1st, we, I think we all, yes, we all attended the Clay County Joint Powers. I really thought that they had a really good speaker, with some really good, positive things. And I think the whole agenda that day was meant to be positive things going on in all of our communities, and it was well done. April 4th, yesterday, we had our, our diversion chairs meeting, executive meeting, and the topic there has been the, the establishment of the governance policies, which is going to be coming forward soon, being recommended to the full board. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Ebinger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the 22nd, I attended a diversion authority flow adjustment meeting. It was the last one in a series that they had. Diversion staff presented some good information on the process of the flow adjustment. There was pretty sparse attendance on the part of the public, but individual, individuals were able to talk to some of the land agents to discuss their, their specifics of their properties. On the 23rd, I attended a community leaders roundtable with Deed Commissioner Grove, along with Commissioner Mojo, County Administrator Larson, Mayor Carlson, Derek LaPlante, Joe Rosso from Great Fargo-Morehead EDC, and Shannon Foal from the Chamber, along with a number of other people. Derek did a great report on the metro area and really did some very compelling evidence that we are a metropolitan area here, which is something that the state of Minnesota, and particularly Deed, has failed to recognize for a number of years. We all interjected some of the information that we could provide on this. And I got the impression that Commissioner Grove was pretty impressed with the situation. It didn't hurt that he just finished a tour of the Morehead School District's Career Center. And I'm hoping we'll see some movement on the part of the state to be a little more inclusive of this Clay County and this area being part of the second largest metro in the state. The, later that day, I attended virtually the diversion authorities finance committee. Executive Director's report, Joel Paulson indicated that we're moving towards co-locating with the Red River Alliance and putting offices in there. We approved a IT service contract with the one that the Red River Alliance is using, so that they'll be able to communicate better. Agreed or recommended MOUs with Morehead Public Service, Dickey Rural Networks, Berlind Township in Cass County. That was forwarded to the Authority Board for approval. And did recognize Kent Costin, the Fargo Finance Director, who just retired for all the work he's done for the diversion. Commissioner Campbell covered the diversion authority board meeting that I attended the following day. We brought our financial issues forward, and he covered most, just about all the other information that came out of that. On the 28th, I met with County Administrator Larson and Mark Sloan, just to discuss some of the redistricting information. And on the 1st of April, I attended the Clay County Joint Powers Intergovernmental Retreat, which Commissioner Campbell already addressed.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Ebinger. Commissioner Keely.
Thank you. I also attended the diversion meeting on the 22nd that's been reported on. Thursday, the 24th, I attended the CAP LP Board Meeting. We did the executive director's performance review and approved that. We approved reelection of Jonathan Green. performance review and approved that. We approved reelection of Jonathan Green to that board, approved some Head Start policies, accepted some grants, looked at the community assessment, and approved the COLA increase. On Friday, the 25th, I attended our Clay County Early Childhood Initiative meeting. We had updates from agencies there and a long conversation about what childcare providers are struggling with, which we've had extensive conversation about that today, so I won't repeat some of that. We also looked at some of the resources available for children's mental health and child abuse prevention, in particular through Sanford Safe Kits. Friday, the 1st, I attended the Intergovernmental Retreat, which has been reported on already. On Monday, the 4th, so yesterday, I attended the AMC Legislative Update. There were a number of county staff, including Administrator Larson, that attended that. Thank you to those folks for paying attention to what's coming down the pipeline, so that we can all be informed about those things. Last night, I also attended the Morehead City Planning Commission meeting. We had two public hearings, both for conditional use permits. One was a request to exceed maximum heights for a commercial mixed-use property at 2501 11th Street South, so this is right next to that Marriott Hotel and the assisted living facility. There's going to be an apartment building with some mixed use in there. The second was a request to allow development in the 100-year flood fringe and a conditional use permit to allow excavation fill in the floodway at 1, 4th Street South in Morehead. This was something that was actually approved three years ago, but they were waiting to see what was going to happen with a possible construction project on 4th Street, so it was put on pause for a while, their permits expired, and then we were just approving that again. That's going to be mixed-use apartments going into that space there. I was, last week, also a part of a community conversation with some Morehead folks on affordable senior housing needs. And that concludes my reports, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. The, on the 27th, I also attended the, or, excuse me, the 22nd, rather, I attended the PIC committee, as Commissioner Campbell has reported on. That evening, I attended the FM Diversion Authority Flowage Easement Open House Information Session at the Law Enforcement Center. Thank you to those folks for hosting two of those meetings on the Clay County side, those are vital to the conversations. The next day, I attended virtually the perm materials, solid waste meeting that Commissioner Campbell also reported on. That day, I attended with Commissioner Ebinger the community leaders roundtable with Minnesota Commissioner Grove. I thought that was very important to have the information. One, to have him present in Clay County, two, to be able to have discussions in terms of what we're seeing and how the department can continue to advocate for rural Minnesota as well. After that, I attended the business partners roundtable with Commissioner Grove. Thank you to the city of Morehead and the Chamber for facilitating those discussions. Certainly important to hear business perspectives on our challenges as well, so often they go hand in hand. The next day, I attended the SWAC Committee meeting, as Commissioner Campbell had updated. And then that evening, I also attended the CAP LP meeting, as Commissioner Kaylee has reported on. Good information in continuing good work there. They also are continuing to secure grants to help with the funding sources. The next day, I met with Administrator Larson on issues upcoming in terms of work, future work group planning sessions. On Monday of that, last week, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health meeting in Fergus Falls. We had updates from the Clay County Collaborative. The new directors continue to meet with agency partners, so good to hear that. But two members of our board met for the personnel committee, they're continuing to have all staff meetings in terms of questions that may come forward in benefits packages. And talked a little bit about our clean bill rate. We had, we're potentially going to go out and have that billing happen through another agency, but are doing such a good job internally, it didn't make sense to change that. And that afternoon, I attended the landfill construction committee meeting with Burns &amp; Mack, Clay County, and Comstock with Commissioner Campbell, he reported upon that well. The next day, I attended the detox kickoff meeting that Commissioner Gross updated this board on, exciting information, certainly in terms of allowing Klein-McCarthy to understand what our vision is for that. I think we're hopeful that we'll be able to have a full board discussion on what they've addressed in the next two months, for sure, so more to come on that. That afternoon, testified with Lakeview Parrel Commissioner Ted Patzer, or Todd Patzer, on the House File 2367 on our score funding. The Chair, Representative Markwart, did reach out to me that they're hopeful that they're able to secure something for that within this session. They're a little unsure yet where their, their targets are, so hopeful that we can have some sort of reallocation of that score funding, even if it's on a two-to-three-year phase, and I feel like that will really benefit counties. I attended the ARPA committee meeting that we certainly talked enough about today, and then also attended another hearing on the Career Academy allocation that Chair Markwart, Representative Markwart, is carrying $10 million to go locally to the Morehead Career Academy, would be enormous. Friday, I attended the Intergovernmental Retreat. Thank you to the Joint Powers for the planning that goes into that. I know that takes a lot of work to make sure that you develop an agenda that's worthwhile, and I really felt that we had great attendance at that, so thank you for your leadership on that. And then, thank you to the city of Dilworth for hosting that as well. Yesterday, I attended the Rural Minnesota Counties Meeting, as Commissioner Gross alluded to. And then, an item of note, April 21st, the Soil and Water Conservation District will be holding their Pollinator Pint Night to learn about pollinators, plants that go into that, proceeds from the sales will go to the Crestwood Pollinator Habitat. There are, and that's at Junkyard Brewing Company. There are also non-alcoholic versions or offerings there for folks that would prefer that. And I believe that concludes my report. Administrator Larson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Tuesday, the 22nd, I attended the PIC meeting that's been addressed. Also had some ongoing discussions with Kirk Rosenberger and Mr. Melton in regards to the Resource Recovery Contract that was finalized today. We had county management on the 23rd. Just of note, we had some discussion, every year we reevaluate government days, and our, our group felt that it was worth giving Friday afternoon a try versus Thursday in hopes of trying to see if we could reach some additional airgoers. And so I have reached out to the, to the fair to, just to verify that the, that the schedule hasn't gone out yet.
Thank you.
We also talked about the new payroll system that's, went into effect this week, and also Joe's continuing to work as the storage plan for the county as, as the new storage facility became ours, or, excuse me, on April 1st. I participated also in the Deed, the Deed Commissioner Grove meeting that's been addressed. Also, I attended the SWAC meeting that's been addressed, talked to the MCC JPA meeting on the 24th that's also been addressed. I participated in the MACA legislative session, I'll kind of just save my notes till the end on that. Met with Kelvin Benson from Michelle Fishbox Office, we talked about transportation funding, really focused on the North Broadway Bridge, there's build grants available, and that he felt that would be a potential option for Clay County, and so I did reach out to our county engineer on that. Detox Committee meeting on the 29th, which has been, been addressed. On the 29th, also met with the Safety Committee there. Post-COVID here, now they're looking at dusting off our, our different drills that we have and making sure that everything is up to date, and so we'll continue to, to work on that. Talked with, on 31st, talked with Derek LaPointe. There's a bill, House Bill 4522, which is looking at some additional business relief grant possibilities, and also some rental assistance is also a big thing. I'm going to be having Derek come to just provide an update overall with the relationship there. Finally, just a legislative update that's been touched on by Commissioner Kaylee. Again, just of note, I think there is, there are some opioid funding bills that may be voted on this week that could make our opioid, opioid dollars eligible or available to us by as early as April this year. And also to our discussion earlier, they also spoke that there's currently 50 childcare bills to address the different various needs also there. So, last thing, severe weather awareness week. This week, there's going to be a tornado drill here on the campus, April 7th at 1:45. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Brian?
Madam Chair, after I get done here, I'll, I'll get with Dave. On CASA 19, I believe, if you recall, that's the condemnation action we did several weeks back, and my understanding with Justin was that's turned over to the state, and we should be fully ready, so I'll just talk with Dave right after this and make sure there's not something else we're missing, but I think we should be ready to go.
Great, thank you. Colleen? Okay, if nothing else, we do have a work group that's scheduled for 1 o'clock, is that correct, Steve?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
So we are adjourned, thank you.